Good evening. I hereby call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, December 15, 2021. Want to confirm that the agenda and package has been posted and that we have six of seven members present. Tom Marvin is not in attendance at this meeting tonight. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business tonight is the general public comment period. Public comments during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item. If an agenda item is also listed as a public hearing, persons may wait to speak until that particular item. And the main item we have tonight is in fact also a public hearing if someone would like to wait. Is there anyone in the public who would like to be heard on any matter on the agenda? In the audience here, I see no one. If anyone who may be streaming this meeting wishes to be heard on any agenda item, please call in at 702-589-9629. And there is a slight delay in the feed, so we'll wait one minute to provide an opportunity to call in. Hearing and seeing, no desire to provide comments. I'll close the public comment period, this public comment period of the meeting, and move into the regular agenda. Item number one for possible action is approval of the minutes of the November 17, 2021 regular meeting. Does anyone have any comments to the meeting minutes?
No comments, but I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. Motion has been seconded. Wait a minute, we don't need to vote. Oh, we do. Thank you. Sorry. All in favor of keeping the minutes as they are?
Aye.
Anyone? Thank you. Moving on to the second item of the agenda for possible action. This is item number V-21-654. Mike and Tammy Williams, 371 Cat's Eye Drive. This is a public hearing on an application for a variance in the R110 single-family residential zone to permit an attached patio cover with a rear setback of five feet, whereas city code requires a minimum rear setback of 10 feet. Do we have a report on the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicants purchased the property earlier this year and would like to add a 1,620 square foot attached patio cover to the rear of the home, which would be partially over the pool, a portion of which will have a rear setback of five feet instead of the required 10 feet. In this zone, houses are required to have a rear setback of 20 feet, and attached patio covers may encroach 50% into that required rear yard, which is why there's a requirement for a 10-foot rear setback. In this case, most of the patio cover will meet that requirement, but a small portion is proposed at the 5-foot rear setback. The applicant's justification notes that the homes to the rear of their property are all higher in elevation, resulting in a lack of privacy for their backyard. They also note that the abutting land adjacent to the closest portion of the patio cover is encumbered by utility easements of 15 feet and 20 feet in width, which means structures will not be allowed to be constructed within those easements on the neighboring lots. Because of the 15-foot and 20-foot wide abutting easements on the neighboring properties to the rear, if the applicant's request for a 5-foot rear setback is approved, there will still be at least 20 feet between the subject patio cover encroachment and any other structures on neighboring lots to the rear. With regard to the criteria of the code about a variance needing to be similar to other property rights that other people may enjoy, there have not been any other approvals for reduced rear setbacks in this area. And in fact, only a few variances have been approved since the code changes allowed, allowing people to encroach up to 50% in the rear yard. The only other properties that can enjoy a 5-foot or less rear setback for an attached patio cover are the historic townsite lodge, which abut an alley to the rear, which provides an extra 20-foot buffer, in this case, which would be somewhat comparable to the easements on the neighboring property. The staff report goes through the five criteria that are required by code and law in order to be met for the Planning Commission to consider approval of a variance, and all five must be found in favor of in order for it to be approved. The staff report concludes with alternate findings that could be used to either approve or deny the request, and if approved, two conditions are proposed. First, that the variance approval would be based on the plans and information submitted and discussed as part of the variance request, and the variance would not apply to deviations to the plans if the scope of the variance is expanded beyond that's what's shown on the plans and submitted information. And secondly, that if approved, the space underneath the patio cover within the rear 20 feet of the property must remain unenclosed.
Have we received any comments from adjacent property owners?
I believe Stacy can reference that.
Chairman, yes, I did receive a public comment from Tyson Ballard, and he is in support of this item.
Is that kind of the extent of his comment?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do any of the commission members have questions of staff on this? Is the applicant present or representative?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Matuska and esteemed members of the Planning Commission. My name is Steve Morris. I'm here representing the applicant, or the applicants, I should say, Michael and Tammy Williams. And if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to entertain them.
I guess I would ask the most basic question. Is there anything that you would wish to add to the information Susan provided?
Not necessarily. A picture really is worth a thousand words, and the pictures really tell the story of what's going on with this particular property, especially with the elevations in the backyard. It is certainly the applicant's position that a substantial right that goes along with any property is the right to privacy. The only way to truly obtain that is by a patio cover of some degree. So that is the applicant's position with that respect. And again, you can see that for yourself in the pictures that have been presented in the packet.
So I'm looking at the height of the elevation drawings, and I'm trying to find the height. Okay, it looks like about 13 feet in height. I may have missed it, but the parson's wall at the back property that this would be closest to, do you have any, do you know the height of that wall?
I do not know the exact dimensions of that.
Okay. Do we know the elevation difference between the applicant's yard and the yards of the neighbors? I know it's the same question, but asked a little differently in case there's a...
So if I understand your question correctly, the elevation, so the elevation of the improvement, the structure would not exceed the elevation of the neighbors to the rear. It would be below still.
Okay.
From my understanding and review of the plans.
And it, you know, as we look at some of the photographs, it does appear that it's greater than 13 feet, but it's difficult to judge. In reading the package, it appears that the portion of the patio that will encroach is going to cover a cooking area principally?
Correct. There's a great picture in the packet that shows that area highlighted in red.
Oh, right, right.
If we can, yeah. And perhaps in your individual packets, you may see that drawing that shows the exact area in question, highlighted in red.
I see it. Thank you, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? The applicant? I'm sorry?
You asked my question.
Ah, okay. Get in quick. Get in, get in early. So I see no questions of the applicant. Does anyone want to express their opinion and/or emotion? Oh, I'm sorry. I am terribly sorry.
First of all, I'm going to recuse myself or abstain from voting since I'm the president of the HOA, which has already participated in the approval from the HOA standpoint of this application.
Okay. Chairman Matuska, just a point of clarification, maybe before the Planning Commission provides their perspectives, that you hold a public hearing as for the variance.
Thank you very much. Hold on, hold on, motions or votes. We'll hereby open the public hearing on this matter, related, not related, but regarding 371 Cat's Eye Drive. Seeing no one in the audience other than the applicant, I'm going to ask if anyone streaming this would have a comment, please call in. The number is 702-589-9629. And again, in relation to that delay, we'll hold it open for a minute to allow comments. Hearing no comments, we'll close the public comment period, public meeting period, a public hearing period of the agenda item, and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Would anyone like to express their ideas and opinions or provide a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I've been to this property approximately a year ago while it was on the market vacant, and these pictures are very accurate, and I think that doing a patio cover would help alleviate the privacy issues. The cool deckings are already there where they're just going to put the patio cover up, and I would be in favor of this. I think in the staff report, the staff, or the applicant's justification for the variance criteria has been met, and like I said, I'd be in favor of it.
Thank you very much. I would say I struggle with variances of this nature. It's a pretty significant cover. And, you know, we certainly see a lot of variances, and they tend to be repetitive. You know, I would like this, but does it really meet the variance criteria? And so I tend to be hesitant to provide variances of this nature. However, given that there were no comments from adjacent properties, and given that in this particular case there is a significant elevation change, it certainly does not appear that it's going to have a visual impact on neighboring properties, and that would be one of my concerns. I also think the property is unique enough that we shouldn't see this specific variance request become a matter of course. But there is always that danger. Anyway, that's what I wanted to say about that. Anyone else have any thoughts on the matter? Anyone have, okay, Mr. Di Teresa?
Yes, I have to say that the applicant's application is really well-defined, and their intentions are very clear. And due to the topography of the property and the surrounding properties, I can see where they would want to do this for the purpose of privacy. And yeah, I find it's very reasonable.
Very good. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve variance V-21-654. Reference the conditions noted in the staff report and findings.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone wishing to be heard, any further comments on the matter? Hearing none. Let's take a vote. All in favor of this variance request and the motion provided, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, so indicate with a nay. The motion passes. All in favor.
Thank you for your time and consideration. Appreciate you.
You're very welcome. So that brings us to agenda item number three. Well, yeah, I was thinking of maybe moving the five o'clock vote up ahead, but let's go ahead and go forward with the training. Agenda item number three is a presentation by Community Development Director Michael Mays regarding Planning Commission training.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. There's a couple of objectives of what I would like to accomplish with tonight's training. And starting with, this is an opportunity to share information with the Planning Commission. But I wanted to emphasize, there's a lot of material contained within this presentation, and the intent is not to have a detailed dialogue back and forth on it because we would be here until midnight. This is the beginning of the conversation. This is an opportunity to share information with the Planning Commission, and it can be the impetus for subsequent, more detailed trainings at future meetings. Our intent is to highlight certain areas and to inform the Planning Commission of things that are going to be coming up in 2022. And there will be appropriate times later on in that year to discuss in detail some of these particular items, but we wanted to provide a broad overview. But having said that, we want to make sure that the Planning Commission understands that staff is a resource for you. We are here all hours to be able to respond to your questions, matters on the agenda, but general material that is related to your role as Planning Commission members within the community. So questions about the master plan, questions about zoning, don't hesitate to reach out. That's what we're here, is to be a resource for you. So the three areas I wanted to briefly highlight tonight include the city's master plan, discussing in greater detail findings of fact, and some upcoming text amendments that may come before the Planning Commission in 2022. So starting with the master plan, you are familiar with the long-range land use map. We reference it in all of our staff reports. We talk about the specific land use designations as part of your considerations for rezonings and other matters that come before you. Just wanted to let you know that the master plan was first adopted in 1964. The version that has currently been adopted was in 2003, which replaced the 91 master plan and was last amended in 2015, the last major amendment update. The master plan should focus on the physical development of a community. It should be looking long-range, be comprehensive, and be amendable. There are four main components to any master plan. There is the community profile overview, survey of existing conditions of the community, the master plan elements, which I'll get to here in a second, and then a process for implementation of the objectives within the master plan. State law requires that there are eight elements that should be included within every master plan. They cover conservation issues, historic preservation, housing, land use, public facilities and services, recreation and open space, seismic safety, and transportation. Some of the main benefits of having a master plan is that it serves as a guide to the city council and Planning Commission and city staff regarding development within the community. It emphasizes goals and policies necessary to implement the master plan as well as respond to citywide and regional needs. So to summarize, the master plan is the guiding document that is used to help with the development of the city, and it is a fluid document that can be adapted to the changing needs of the community. And so with that, I can take questions on that segment of the presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mays, I have actually a couple of them. In my reviewing the NRS requirements on this, there's a couple of points that I think you really haven't touched on. One in particular, I was really surprised at, and it has to do, and this is NRS 278, 190, and it says it requires the Planning Commission to prepare an annual report to the governing body, which I assume is the council, with any recommendations concerning the master plan. And what I'm, probably the second part of my question has to do with what I call the long-term physical plans for the community. Since that plan was adopted, and even in the 2015 upgrade, there has been no attempt to address the outlying regional effects of I-11 coming through the community, number one. And probably more currently, which is somewhat on the minds of different, I'd say, residents, has to do with the inputs that are being received from the mayor of Henderson, having to do with properties adjacent to their city, and which I believe have some level of impact on lands that are either owned by or associated with Boulder City. And so I guess the piece I'm kind of wondering is first, is that issue of the report something that just, I'm misreading, which is possible. I'm not an expert on this, so I'm not going to pretend to be. But if it is, it seems like we need to consider doing that. Because to me, if there is an annual report recommendation, then we would be looking as a body at physical zoning changes, potential planning and zoning changes, especially in this outlying area around I-11, since that is a major change. And I think when it all said and done, it is a document, and it's clearly across the board, that we have to look out 10, 20 years. It's an old document. It hasn't been updated. So what do you, I'll put it back to you. So I've made a couple of points, obviously. Do you have comment?
So first off, in your reference to Henderson's annexations, the lands in question are not within the boundaries of Boulder City, not within our jurisdiction. Our master plan covers the jurisdiction of our community. They wouldn't be able to annex land that's already within Boulder City. NRS prohibits that. In terms of the age of the master plan, certainly, there's always the opportunity, at the request of the Planning Commission, to ask staff to explore updates to elements of it. The city could explore... The city could explore a major overhaul of the master plan. It would be difficult to do with the existing resources that the department has. As with the last master plan update, we would be seeking consultant. And that would be a policy decision by the City Council to undertake that effort for a major overhaul of the plan. Certainly, one of the priorities for the staff is to be working on addressing some of the needs within the zoning ordinance, which is separate from the master plan. The master plan is an overview document that provides guidance, but it is separate from zoning.
It is separate from zoning, but the issue, of course, is this is a document that sets forward the strategic plans for the community of which it is the primary guide that City Council should be following. So unless, and since it's within our purview as a commission to review on a regular basis the needs perhaps of the physical effects of things that are occurring and just look at it from a standpoint, what would we recommend? I think that's the point I'm getting at. It seems to me that we haven't been doing this, not as long as I've been on this commission. And maybe it's something we need to do, that perhaps there's a, a session that we need to do towards the end of the year. Perhaps as part of this, this is a good opportunity to bring it up. But I'm saying maybe there's a dedicated session that the commission should just say, hey, discuss, are there any things we feel are appropriate to bring before the council and be in consideration? I understand your comments, of course, on staff availability to do that, you know, having staff to do it. But again, recommendation out of the commission should go to a council that perhaps says they should be considering it and budgeting for it. It's not on the table. So those are some thoughts I had when I went through this, is just perhaps something that needs to be considered. I was under the impression that the land that Henderson is intending to annex was within our Boulder City limits, and it was privately owned. And there may not be a lot we can do to stop that. But I, I would like to see it discussed by the city manager, city attorney, et cetera. And since we're talking about the master plan, you know, it, annexation of city land will, will have an impact on Boulder City. And I'd like to see that included in the master plan also.
So let me just remind the Planning Commission the narrow scope of this presentation tonight. And, and we, we can't deviate from that, but the quick answer is it's not part of our jurisdiction. So I'm happy to talk to Commissioner De Teresa offline about that matter at another point. And certainly, Planning Commission members, as it relates to the master plan, if you have more detailed questions, please reach out to us. We're here as staff to talk to you about that. And certainly, we can explore, coming back to the Planning Commission in the future, to discuss in greater detail potential changes to the master plan.
Thank you.
If I could add something. I think the questions that both of you have brought up are very good questions. And I think this is, I think what is, what is intended as the level of discussion. The, I think the thoughts that we had for tonight's presentation were to be to kind of keep it at a high level. But hearing these comments, which, which I'm thrilled to hear, would suggest to me that one of the options that Michael and I had talked about, to have a more of a training session at a time where we can all be there or be on the phone, might be a, might be a way to proceed and get into some of the more detailed questions, especially perhaps on the master plan. The challenge will be, of course, to do so in compliance with open meeting laws and that sort of thing as, as needed. But I'm thrilled to hear questions. I think we should have a detail, should try and figure out how to have a detailed discussion. So that would be my request of staff is to, let's look at how we may proceed down that path where we can really roll up our sleeves and, and ask these questions and discuss them. And that was just a comment, not, no, no need for response, of course.
Just, not to belabor it, but of course, I think the way it was presented to me and I reviewed it, to me, I thought this was a training session. And of course, it was going to be in front of the public. So there are pertinent things that I thought was appropriate to bring out and discuss. I have no issue with what Mr. Matuska is saying about perhaps at this point, putting it off to a, a more detailed discussion. But when we talk training, training is also a two-way street to understand and also to be put forward ideas. So that's all I've been trying to put forward tonight. I saw some things that seemed to be in the, what I call the state requirements. I didn't see them addressed, and so I'm just trying to understand that and then probably offer what I think is something we, as the commission, should consider. So again, maybe that should be a, a separate part of a detailed training session. Because I thought that was what this was. I didn't realize this was just going to be a summary.
Duly noted. All right, the next topic we wanted to cover, unless there's anything else with the master plan?
You know, I guess it, it seems to me, but again, I, I don't want to keep everyone here for an extended period of time, but to the degree that there are some comments that you might have, I don't think it would hurt to hear those. However, we probably won't get into a back and forth. Do you see what I'm saying? Does that kind of make sense? So, because I don't want to shut you down. You probably have some pretty good observations.
I've, I've expressed most of my questions that I had after reviewing the package. And so I, I don't have any further that, at this point, I mean, there are details still within it, but understanding the purpose as Mr. Mays has explained it, I guess we could go forward and just keep it simple. But I do think we need a detailed session to go over this and be able to raise these issues because I do believe they need to get back to council. At least that's my, that's my opinion as one member of the commission.
I agree, and I think most of us here do as well. So I think it, I think it goes without saying that we would like to look into a, a subsequent meeting where we can really have some give and take. And I'll stop at that.
All right, the next topic is findings of fact. The findings serve three primary purposes. They articulate the Planning Commission's position and provide factual basis for support or denial of the request. They provide the applicant an understanding of those facts during the public hearing and deliberation by the Planning Commission. And they provide a record if challenged in the courts. The findings of fact, staff provides within your staff reports, information on these findings, just as you heard with the earlier item before you, and lays that out for your consideration. It's important to note, these are subject to the evidence that the Planning Commission receives during the public hearing and can be modified. It's not set in stone. It's offering information for reference to the Planning Commission. But as you hear the testimony being provided by the people who come before you regarding that item, that may modify your perspective on what the findings are. And so it's important as part of the hearing to articulate back to staff that when you do make a recommendation, that you're making a recommendation based on findings and the findings that you see as part of that hearing and that item, which is the basis for your recommendation. And this is really important in the fact that the Planning Commission makes the final actions as it relates to conditional uses and variances unless those decisions are appealed to the City Council. So that's the reason why it's very important to articulate those findings during your deliberation and with your recommendation. So with that, I just wanted to go over the specific findings for, first, the variance, and then with respect to the conditional use. So with the findings for the variance, this is in section eleven thirty-two four of the city code. There are five, and I've kind of highlighted aspects of each of those findings to emphasize for this presentation. So for example, with A, that in the case of this variance, there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances beyond what typically would be proposed for development for a use of property. That the variance is necessary to preserve the enjoyment of the property in question that is possessed by others within the area, under B. And with C, that granting the variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare or interest of other properties within the area. Continuing on with D, that the granting of such variance will not be contrary to the comprehensive plan. And that with E, that this is not a request that is reoccurring frequently as to make what, instead of a variance, would be appropriate, to consider a text amendment instead. So if, if a certain type of variance keeps coming back to the Planning Commission over and over and over again, what this finding is saying is that the appropriate venue should be to reconsider the city's regulations instead of granting the variance time and time again. As it relates to conditional uses, this is in eleven thirty-three of the city code. That the use will be substantially in conformance with the master plan. Number two, that the use will be compatible with adjacent uses of the land. And that number three, it's designed to not be materially detrimental to uses and properties in the surrounding area. The findings for the conditional use continue on with number four, that the development shall be located and designed to avoid undue noise, odor, traffic, and other nuisances. And that with five, it will be served by adequate facilities, public facilities, to support that proposed use. And so with the Planning Commission consideration of conditional use findings, this provision continues and talks about how important it is to make the written findings, which specify the facts, the record of the Planning Commission's deliberation. And again, just like with the variances, staff prepares responses of those findings. But again, it's an opportunity for the Planning Commission during the deliberation to articulate other aspects that you believe has been proven as part of the evidence and deliberations that's been presented to you in establishing your findings with your recommendation. So findings of fact questions.
I'm just going to make a, make a comment or a note here to, to all of us. As we put forward motions on variances or conditional use, you'll hear Susan kind of look at us and go findings. And so think about it as you prepare a motion, or think of through a motion, what are the findings upon which we're basing that decision? And that's very important for staff. It's important for that decision for the findings to be articulated in a reasonably clear manner. And Susan typically does a pretty good job of identifying findings, both for approval and denial, as, as we've seen. So it's good to reference those as we make our motions.
Mr. Chairman, just as clarification for the audience, if nothing else, if there is one watching, as you know, staff will provide alternate findings typically for approval and denial for a variance. But since conditional uses are approved by means of a resolution, and as per the code, conditional use is typically often considered to be potentially appropriate for a particular zone unless there are specific reasons why it wouldn't be. So what staff will do is provide a resolution in favor of the request with the findings in that resolution. And then, of course, if the Planning Commission does not think that particular use is appropriate for that particular site, then alternatively, you would make a motion to deny the request, and then you would provide findings for that. But if the commission considers approval, those findings are already part of your resolution.
Mr. Chairman, maybe another way to help with the Planning Commission as you are preparing that motion is you can also make reference to the findings by referencing the findings that were provided by staff on page whatever of the staff report. So then that also makes it clear to the public, to the applicant, that your recommendation is tied to a specific reference of material that everyone is publicly accessible to and can review. If there's nothing else with the findings, I will move on to the text amendments. And I wanted to emphasize with this, this is just the beginning of the conversation. The intent in highlighting three areas, which I'm going to go into some detail for you tonight, is not to have a deliberation on these proposed tax amendments. It's to give a heads up to the Planning Commission about matters that you may be reviewing in 2022 and the origins for them, so you can have a better understanding of some of the things that staff will be working on. And so certainly, there will be for future opportunities to discuss in detail each of these proposed tax amendments. This is just an opportunity to provide a highlight. But what I wanted to emphasize, primarily for the public benefit, and we saw this with some of the recent text amendments that came before the Planning Commission, is that there's a general confusion regarding a text amendment and a specific rezoning or conditional use. Text amendments apply to either the entire zoning district in question or the entire community, depending on what the text amendments are to, are zoning ordinance, not a particular property. So for example, with a conditional use, when the Planning Commission is evaluating the appropriateness of amending the code to allow a particular use within a zoning district, it's not that you're looking at one property in question, you're looking at the entire district and whether it's appropriate to add that. And with that, then there are opportunities in the future through subsequent in the future through subsequent applications before the city. And then again, with the example of conditional uses, where surrounding property owners are notified of a particular and specific request for a particular property. And that's the opportunity for the public to weigh in and the opportunity for the Planning Commission to look specifically at that proposed use, at that proposed location. So there are three potential areas that may be coming before the Planning Commission within the next year that I wanted to provide a heads up for you tonight. The first is landscape ordinance, historic preservation ordinance changes, and tiny homes. First tackling the landscape ordinance. The impetus for the city to reevaluate our current landscaping changes or our current landscaping ordinance is a bill that was passed in the legislature this past year. It's Assembly Bill Number 356 that says that by January 1, 2027, it will be prohibited to use Colorado River water to irrigate non-functional turf. And this bill does exempt single-family homes. So this would be all other types of uses, not single-family homes. And non-functional turf is basically sod that is not used for any other purpose except to just mow it. So not a park. A park is a functional open space. But if you have decorative sod as part of a condominium development or a commercial development, after January 1 of 2027, you will not be able to use Colorado River water to irrigate it. And so it results in the need for us to modify our codes to address that. Specifically, our code currently provides points for utilization of sod as part of a landscaping plan that comes before the Planning Commission. In addition, the types of plantings that are recommended currently aren't consistent with the desert tolerant plant recommendations that are needed because of the climate that Boulder City is in. And so you may have heard of the city contracting with StanTech Consulting Firm to come up with recommendations on appropriate plantings for different zones of the community and that we have been reaching out to the public to get input on that recommendation. And that would be part of a text amendment that would come before you. We're hoping in either January or February of 2022 that will include those recommended plantings as well as reexamining the point system that's currently in place in our code. With respect to the historic preservation ordinance, the impetus for reevaluation of the historic preservation ordinance is first within the city's 2025 strategic plan, Goal D, which specifically recommends reevaluation of our existing code. In October of 2020, the City Council approved Resolution 7167, which established the Boulder City Historic Preservation Ordinance Ad Hoc Committee, which includes two members of the Historic Preservation Committee and two members of the City Council. The draft ordinance that's been prepared by the Ad Hoc Committee largely follows the State Historic Preservation Office ordinance and would look at historic district exterior changes and demolition requiring city approval and that a certificate of approval would be needed for building permits. It would also incorporate maintenance standards for properties within the city's historic district. What I wanted to do is kind of highlight next steps for the city's consideration of this and the role that the Planning Commission would play in evaluation of that. The first is going back to the Ad Hoc Committee so that the Ad Hoc Committee can take into consideration what the State Historic Preservation Office's recommendations are with respect to the draft ordinance that was prepared by the Ad Hoc Committee. And they will make a recommendation on how to proceed to the City Council. The City Council then would evaluate that and would provide direction to staff as to whether the city would pursue a text amendment to Title 11, Chapter 27 of the City Code to amend the Historic Preservation Ordinance regulations. If the City Council does that, then the next step with that text amendment process would be a public hearing before the Planning Commission to review proposed text amendments to that ordinance. With that public hearing, the Planning Commission would make a recommendation back to the City Council. And the City Council would buy our city charter, introduce the bill of a proposed change. No action can be taken. It's just introduced before the City Council. And then within 30 days, the City Council would hold a public hearing and consider those proposed changes. Tiny homes. First, let's start with the definition. A tiny house or home is considered a dwelling that is 400 square feet in Floria or less, excluding lofts. The impetus for consideration of this type of use within Boulder City comes from the Nevada Senate Bill Number 150 that was approved with the legislature earlier this year and has a deadline for all municipalities to consider text amendment changes to their zoning ordinance by January 1, 2024. What the bill says that Boulder City and other municipalities must do is designate at least one zoning district that permits tiny homes and accessory dwelling unit, designate at least one zoning district to permit them as a single-family dwelling unit, and provide for tiny house parks. And so one of the things that staff is going to be working on is looking at how other jurisdictions are responding to the legislation requirement, bringing forward to the Planning Commission a proposed text amendment, which would respond to the city's obligations through the state law so that the Planning Commission can provide a recommendation that would go on to the City Council as to how to address each of these three points. Any questions on the text amendments?
Yeah, I have a couple. On the tiny home thing, and again, maybe this is, is there any consideration for whether the tiny homes are supposed to be mobile in nature or fixed?
By definition, they wouldn't be a mobile or vehicle because that's regulated differently, like a mobile home. These would be fixed in location to be a permanent structure. Doesn't mean they can't be relocated, but they're not intended to be like a mobile home or intended to be like a RV because those are regulated in the state differently.
So the the reference to the 2018 International Residential Code, I think what you're telling me or clarifying is that in there, they are not defined as mobile. And the only reason I bring it up, as silly as it is, what you see on TV is these tiny homes and they're typically built on wheels. So it's just, it's a, I'm just trying to get an understanding on that. So it's not, that's that answers that. The other one, and since you're talking about specific text amendments that you currently are considering, there's one that's been bothering me a lot. And I don't know if this was appropriate here or not, but it has to do with short-term rentals, Airbnbs and VNB, the RBOs. We don't really, in the current ordinances, cover that. It is a very prevalent condition that's coming out. Clark County, I know, has implemented rules on it. And I would think we may want to be looking at that and considering how we're going to handle it because it's, it is a, it is an issue. Again, I, I don't, I, I think that's here, but maybe you'd be telling me that's a different place that that has to be brought up, but.
Well, certainly, the Planning Commission can't give direction on staff to do that tonight, but certainly that's just your comment to us as something to consider.
Okay, so it could be part of an amendment, text amendments you would consider just after, you'd have to just now consider that. Okay, that's just fair. I just wanted to know. And the other one, and it just goes back a little bit, this Ad Hoc Preservation Committee. I was a little confused on that one. You may have, I think you may have explained it, but maybe I just didn't get it. And it has, the first bullet said, "Ad Hoc Committee reconsideration and recommendation to City Council." You're not saying that the Ad Hoc Committee is to be reconsidered as an entity, are you?
No. So my reference there is they held four meetings and prepared a recommended draft ordinance, but they were waiting for SHPO to provide their comments. And so they will consider those comments and then make a recommendation to the City Council as to what could be potential changes.
Okay. Okay, and that would be after we, as a commission, have looked at it, right?
No, no. So the purpose of the Ad Hoc Committee was to explore potential changes to the ordinance and then to go back to the City Council with their recommendations.
Okay, then.
And then the City Council decides if they want to pursue a text amendment. And then it would come to the Planning Commission for your review.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Another question.
Any other questions at this point? I've got a real simple question. And I think it's probably rhetorical. I just want to make sure I understand. Just want to make sure I understand. This has to do with the tiny homes and that it's the state guidelines suggest that the city and county, city must designate at least one zoning district that permits tiny homes as an accessory dwelling unit. Seems straightforward, but I'm reading that to say that this would allow two separate families to live on one parcel. Am I correct in understanding that?
As an accessory dwelling, that is the potential.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Michael, is there any more on the presentation you'd like to provide yet tonight?
No, just to reiterate again, this is an opportunity to start the conversation. One of the things we've been hearing from the Planning Commission that you're looking for additional training opportunities and staff wants to provide that. It's also an opportunity, as with the highlights on potential text amendments, to communicate to the Planning Commission what may be things coming up in the future. So it's not presented to you with the packet before you for that matter. We want to be able to keep the Planning Commission informed on the matters that staff is working on and, and obviously, the regulatory influences from the state that directs some of the things that Boulder City needs to tackle. And so let me just thank you again for the opportunity to do this overview. If Planning Commission members have additional questions, don't hesitate to reach out to staff. That's what we're here for.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one little comment actually relating to the beginning of the discussion. I can offer a very brief definition of what an annexation is that I think will clear up confusion. As Michael mentioned, it's not legal for any other city to annex land within Boulder City or any other city. Annexation can only happen on land that is not already within city limits. And if any of you have ever taken a look at the map of Clark County, and I think it's somewhat around 8,000 square miles, you'll see there are five cities within Clark County. You know, you've got Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Henderson, Boulder City, and Mesquite. But when you look at that map of Clark County, there's a whole lot of land that is not within any of those cities. And that is what is called unincorporated Clark County. And basically, the bulk of the county's population or basically close to half of it lives in unincorporated Clark County. Any city can request or proceed with an annexation for land that is in the unincorporated part of the county. In other words, you can ask to annex land that is not already within a city. You cannot ask to annex land that is within a city. So that's why Henderson can't annex any land within Boulder City. They can, just as we annexed land for the El Dorado Valley when we purchased it, that was part of unincorporated Clark County at the time. Now it's within our city limits. So hopefully, that should clarify things for you and as you talk with other citizens to help them understand.
Thank you for that clarification. Michael, I think that concludes the the overview of the training items. I feel though that we're kind of at a place where, at least, okay, personally, I feel like I'm not sure of the next steps. You know, I think folks have good questions here on this commission. I think we'd like an opportunity, or maybe we should have a real quick, I don't know, show of hands or something. Do we want an opportunity? Do we, would Planning Commissioners, I'll word it this way, prefer to reach out individually to city staff to ask questions and have whatever dialogue they feel? Or would you like to get together so we all have the benefit of hearing one another's questions?
I, I think that as we each reach out for clarification and stuff, if we copy everybody on it, because, you know, we've had some really great questions up here. And, and the same when we ask staff for clarification on stuff. I mean, Susan does such a great job. We hardly ever ask to ask her for more information on stuff. But, but when we do, in the past, we've always CC'd everybody on it so that everybody's aware of questions that are asked. And then when she responds, of course, we're all part of the responding. And then, you know, it'd be the same for any kind of training or clarification on, you know, everything we just went over. But, you know, what I took out of this is, this is like an overview of stuff that's going to be coming down that we should start preparing for, like tiny homes. We're going to have 1,000 questions over tiny homes. But, you know, Mike, Michael's taking the time to let us prepare and start having questions of, you know, allotments and all that kind of stuff that's going to come up. This is my kind of recommendation on that.
Mr. Chairman, if maybe I could offer a suggestion, what we could put on the agenda for next month is an agenda item where Planning Commission gives staff direction on the items that you want to focus on for future training opportunities. And then we can plan for that and schedule that. Obviously, we want to be sensitive to making sure that we're not creating a situation for very late meetings. So it may always be subject to what else is on the agenda. We can also We can also explore, and again, as time allows for the planning commission, because we respect the time that you give to the planning commission already, but we can have opportunities to have workshops at a separate time where we can talk about certain items and have a more free discussion on specific topics. And let me just clarify, in terms of the planning commission, sharing information is important to reinforce. You can't email each other. You can certainly individually email staff with questions and queries, but not like a group email to everybody about questions. So just to, so I think we can have a planning commission discussion in January about the areas you would like us to focus on.
Thank you. Ernie, do you have a question?
Well, I think I like your point. And where I was going, I think we should have a workshop. It is important to be able to discuss it because we can't do the email and stuff. I would think if we could come up with those items that are topics that members, commissioners have, we could present them to you, perhaps. I think that's what you're saying at this next session. And then out of that, maybe we could, I would sure recommend we go forward with a workshop as a result of that.
Yeah, I agree with the workshop approach because I haven't been on the planning commission very long. But I will say that, you know, city staff answers all the questions that I have. But I learn a lot from the questions that other commissioners ask. So I think the workshop approach would work best. Thank you.
I just, Mr. Chairman, I think, especially when we start getting into the nitty-gritty on these text amendments that are going to be coming, a workshop where we could ask questions on those would probably be super helpful. So.
So I'm going to kind of then just compile what I think I've heard here. So what I think has been recommended is that during the, or on the January agenda, we will see an item where we provide input to city staff as to what topics we might want to see for training. And that that training, I suppose, we can decide as we move forward what the most appropriate venue for that training is. If it's a five-minute training, perhaps having it at the end of a short agenda would be appropriate. However, workshop seemed to be favorable or favored, and I tend to agree with that as well. So what I'm going to ask of city staff then is if you would go ahead and make sure that item is on the agenda and that we kind of consider, as we move beyond the January agenda, looking for an opportunity for a workshop as appropriate for items that would fit into that category.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item number four for possible action discussion and approval, possible approval of a change of meeting time to 5:00 p.m. beginning with, I'm going to just add, the January 2022 meeting. So all future, if we were to choose to go to 5:00 p.m., it would start with the January meeting, I presume? Is that?
That would be the intent for the meetings in 2022, yes.
All right. I guess I would run this just like any other agenda item. City staff, do you have any comments on this? Anything that we need to be aware?
We basically just need to know if a 5:00 p.m. start time doesn't work for any planning commissioners.
Well, that makes it easy for us. I guess I'll just ask now, does 5 o'clock not work for anyone?
I can make it work.
I can, I can certainly make it work, so.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment from a member Marvin.
Ah, thank you.
Yes. Thomas Marvin, he states that regarding agenda item number four, because I brought up the question of changing the commission meeting time to 5:00 p.m. but won't be in attendance, I have a few comments. I think the change would allow for continuity of time for obligatory and ad hoc attendance by officials and staff. Secondly, with the multiple communication venues available, the change would not diminish public access to nor limit citizen participation in planning commission proceedings. However, if the time change would create attendance difficulties for current planning commission members, item four will obviously be a non-starter. Happy holidays to all, Tom.
Well, all right, thank you very much for reading that into the minutes. So it sounds like, if I'm not mistaken, that 5 o'clock's going to work for everybody. All right. I'm not sure exactly how we are supposed to convey that back. A motion, okay.
A motion would be appropriate.
All right.
Make a motion to go forward with the change to 5 o'clock start meetings, beginning with the 2022 meetings.
You just need a second?
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 An animus approval. We'll see you all at 5 o'clock in the middle of January. I don't happen to have my calendar out, but that's when we'll show up, sounds good. Brings us to agenda item number five, monthly progress report on development allotments.
No comment.
Thank you. And lastly, public comment, to wrap up public comment. Seeing no one in the audience, let's put that, yeah, I'm going to have to open it up to people who may be listening in. The number to call in is 702-589-9629. And we'll give you a minute to call in, thank you. Hearing no comments, we'll close the final public comment period of the meeting and we'll bring this meeting to a close. Well, thank you all, and hey, happy holidays. Hope everyone has a great Christmas.